All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Now there is stand for pledge, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, aisle number one or...
You have Fraser?
This is your... Here.
Got it. Councilwoman Florence?
Here.
Councilwoman Terry, here. Councilwoman Fleming?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Coon?
Here.
Town Clerk, here. Town Attorney, Ms. Andrew.
Here.
Aisle number one's addition, relation changes, approval of agenda.
Um...
Can you go with it?
One addition, number thirteen.
You're not just saying... Yes, ma'am.
Uh, they...
Okay.
Under collective.
They know what claim it's true, claim. All right. All right, see approval with changes.
Make most of the approval of the change of thirteen. What they...
All right, sir. Good, all in favor of approving, um, agenda with changes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Aisle number two's approval of minutes from June seventeen, twenty twenty-four, town council meeting.
Make most to approve of minutes on May twenty, twenty-four. Gee, gee, excuse me. Sorry.
Let's take it. If you've got a second, all favor of approving minutes on June seventeen, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, aisle number three would be public participation. I think we got one person, Mr. Stewart. Can you do it, please?
Actually, we have two.
Oh, we have two?
Yeah, we have one again.
Is this from concern? Do you want to do it now or you do it?
No, it was public participation because it's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Got you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to be here tonight. The reason I want to discuss this now, and I'll wait for number seven to come on, is because Fort White is at a crossroads, a big crossroads. And that's the representatives of Fort White and the people that live in and around Fort White. People that live down by the river, consider that they're part of Fort White because they zip code. The people that live up by three rivers consider their part of Fort White because they're up the road from Fort White. And the only way that Fort White can continue to grow, well, if you plan to grow, because everybody knows the county couldn't plant itself out of a paper bag, is that you folks need to consider adding some more property into Fort White. And I've spoken to people about that. I'm not opposed to paying taxes. I mean, that's what keeps the earnings going. Pay the law. Each attorney today is money every month. I'd say you look terrific tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And pays the mayor and pays the town clerk, pays for ordinances. So taxes aren't necessarily, not even evil. I mean, that's how we fight against government. I think you need to have a start, having a long-range plan. Because I believe that a lot of people that don't actually live in the town proper would be willing to hook up with the town and have a voice about what goes on here. About the river, about access to the river, about economic development in the town itself. I see you guys are moving towards a CRA. But Fort White is very small. You've only got five hundred and thirty-five residents or six hundred, a few hundred, three hundred-plus voters. So the only way that you can expand is to expand the area and expand your voter base. So I would ask the town to think about that. I don't know how you do it. Maybe you have a couple of workshops, you get the pulse of the public. Is he there willing to make a commitment to the town? And I think that would benefit everybody and maybe stop some of the horrendous stuff that's going on between town and county. Now, if I could approach for number seven, I'll do it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Um, Ms. Betsy Martin, am I right?
Yeah.
You're in right, too.
All right. Hi, I'm Betsy Martin and I'm actually the president of a new gardening organization here in Fort White called Gardening for Change. Um, our organization came about, um, actually last, the end of last year. Because of the need we saw for educating new people in the area for actually how to garden, how to actually do landscaping and do everything in this local area, you know, with the plants and things that they need. We're with the Fort White Library and I'm sure that everybody knows about the Fort White Library Plant Sale that they used to have, which was a great community event that we had for a lot of people around this center of county. Um, the library no longer is doing that sale because it just got too large for them. So me and a couple of the other major growers from that sale, we like to grow plants. We like to get plants to people at really reasonable prices so that they can afford to grow food for themselves. And, um, we have been looking for a venue and we want to keep it in Fort White. So last year we decided to have it as a community-wide yard sale, um, right down here on forty-seven. Um, I've done the community-wide yard sale before and I do know that in the past couple of years it's kind of been declining somewhat. I do believe that having our sale during that event will bring a lot of people in. We have, we had over five hundred customers that we wrote tickets on that came to the sale this spring and we had it there this spring. And so many of our loyal customers, they've been coming for almost ten years, over ten years some of them to actually buy our plants, said that they really liked the venue, the way we had it set up in that larger area there with community-wide versus. And that they were able to come and have a yard sale. So they brought their families, their kids, you know, they went around and looked at stuff. So, and bought stuff. So we think that, um, we can actually revitalize that event that happens in the spring and in the fall. We actually last spring did advertising for the sale because I know I had sold individually plants there before and advertising was lacking, you know, letting people know lately. So we got, we did all the Facebook posts. We actually personally bought signs to go out front, you know, to actually point that the community-wide yard sale was happening that week. So we did a lot of things. Thing about a plant sale though is it has to be at a specific time so that it's proper for gardening. So I know you guys are trying to figure out a date to actually have that sale and we would actually like to propose that it be like the last Saturday in October. Because that way we have enough time to grow the plants to get enough size and it's a broader time for the people to get in the ground and actually have them established before real cold weather comes in. You know, so we would like to actually, I know you guys are trying to figure out when to have that sign, but I really do think that having our group as an anchor for that sale and actually help you, help you expand that. Yeah, we would like to work that out.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds wonderful. I mean, what, uh, Bill, who you been dating on the yard sale?
I thought the last yard sale was pretty nice.
In the spring.
I thought it was a lot of people there. It'll be great. I agree with you on that, it'll be.
October twenty-sixth.
But I didn't think it was declining.
Yeah.
I've been in every one of them.
Yeah, I had, I had been to like three in a row the past three years and this is...
I just don't think it fell off that much. We had, in fact, we had more sign up for this one than we did any of them.
Yeah, and we did a lot after.
You think, let me ask you a question. And it's probably something that Lindsay might ask. Have some just kind of went in my brain when you were talking. We're always looking for like, um, groups, uh, I was trying to say Lindsay, like a board, somebody to oversee our community yard sale.
Yeah.
Would that be something y'all might be interested in? Were y'all plans and dates and y'all hosted?
Um... Ooh.
Yeah, so you don't have to come out here and I'm like, oh, hold on.
That's, that's, that's asking a lot.
Well, because you, well, you was talking about putting signs out and all the extra stuff you're doing. Yes, ma'am.
We did that.
I think that's wonderful.
And we'll continue to do that. We will absolutely continue to do social media advertising, um, putting signs out and those type of things. I don't know that we can coordinate the event. We are a group of volunteers.
Right.
You know, and so...
I didn't want to put it out, I just said, note that something that she was brainstorming, like maybe y'all could help us lay out or, I don't know, maybe you've got other people involved. I mean, we could, it takes, it takes a lot. I mean, there again, I'm in the middle of baseball. I do a lot of baseball and stuff with you, so I'm hardly ever in town. I don't think I've been in town on any of these, these yard sales. If I would, I'd be there. Um, I love yard sales, love to come to them. I just, I've got, so busy with my son right now and I'm always over the weekend out of town. So that's why I would use, that's not be the person to talk to about maybe hosting it. So that way y'all can plan it the way you want, make it as big as you want and, I mean, something to think about, something to think about.
The last Saturday in October.
You got answer now, you get back with Ms. Connie? We're still gonna have it. I mean, we're, we're still gonna have it.
Yard sales is traditionally, the first weekend in the month is the best while everybody's got their money.
Right.
That's just tradition. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Well, back in October, first weekend of October.
It's the twenty-sixth of October. We couldn't, we couldn't burn plants. It's too hot to start burning plants for a permanent time.
But you said October first.
You said the last weekend.
You said last weekend of October.
Yeah.
What about the first weekend of November?
Well, we could do that too. The first weekend of November, we could absolutely do that too.
Well, we'll take a lot of, I mean, guidance from y'all. I mean, we don't, we just try to play it accordingly to every one that we think would be good.
I would, I would just say that the first weekend in November, I think, would be better because a lot of people, the Saturday before Halloween, they're busy with different festivals and different things that are going on around.
So that'd be, that'd be followed us. Yeah, we'll call it that.
Florida Georgia game, yeah.
The first weekend of November would be fabulous.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Florida Georgia game.
You got Ms. Connie, that's the student, the student?
What's that date, Debbie?
November, November sixth.
November second?
Yeah.
People be getting in there and getting out too. The Florida Georgia game be going that weekend too.
Right.
Florida Georgia weekend, yeah.
No. Nope. No, there was...
He wasn't.
Very, thank you all so much.
Very much. And if you decide that you can oversee the whole, let us know. Talk to some friends and stuff, see if we can put it together, have it with board or something.
Have to give us a desk in there.
Ma'am?
We have to give us a desk in there.
Hey, we'll figure, we'll figure it out.
Do people here to rent a booth? They pay here for the booth?
So that's all you're, that's all you're...
Was the fee, you think the fee was okay? Ten dollars?
Oh, great.
Okay.
There's not one you, and okay, good deal.
No, because that's a hundred and fifty dollars of that automatically goes to Fort White.
All right. All right, at this time, guys, we'll close by participation number three. Let's move to aisle number four, they business, Doug Sanders. State of Florida Main Street Brokerage up there in the CR map area.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do that, I want to give information to council members and the town attorney. We have won a hundred thousand dollars for the city. Fifty thousand dollars that can be spent for these parks. And the next slide shows the park in the south. These applications, I'm going to pass this, have this passed down the line. You know, it was about a year ago when Connie gave us a tour of the town and you had such a wonderful park in the south, you got a whole area there just waiting to be developed. So now you have options. The budget was approved, the governor approved all of the park grants this year. So I'll be making the same speech to Lake Butler later this week. So many communities in Florida are going to be getting park improvements like benches, lighting, we're going to up your park pavilions and that kind of thing. And there'll be investment documents coming our way that the town clerk and the mayor will be signing. So we're really pleased.
So we're, we're guaranteed this has been a once, so we're guaranteed.
I think we see the paperwork today.
Awesome.
Fifty thousand for each park.
So Johnny V. Bryant, yeah, has he swear?
Yes, the, the prices will change because, because as you well know, especially in construction projects, over a year's time, everything goes up. So we're anticipating contingencies in this. We get to spend fifty thousand dollars and we'll go as far as we can with, with the prices that we have. So this is one of the building blocks I hope that will help the future of the town. The next slide is what I wanted to update you on. The CRA map, which we amended. We've added commercial properties that are actually off this map, but will be included in the final adoption ordinance that you're all doing by the end of August at your next meeting. We'll have a final report that we can send it to the county and starting your community rent on the area. So hopefully with the certified tax rule next year, you'll get your first increase from your commercial area. Now, this is the north map. The next slide shows the south map, which includes the area for the new wastewater treatment plant. And as I was driving in this afternoon, I noticed some commercial properties that probably can go in right here. That will show up on the map next month when you have your final hearing. Now, on your agenda, you have Main Street, which is another building block that we hold on the next slide. But well, first of all, just to do a quick summary, you've done a fighting and that sets a report. You adopted that report by resolution. You established yourself as the CRA board tonight. You'll have the first readings for the CRA plan and the CRA tax increment financing. Next month, the final hearings will lock in your plan and your tax increment financing. So that's where we are on your CRA. Now, the next slide is Main Street and it was brought to my attention by Connie. Actually, I worked with a Main Street program down where I'm from in Pasco County. When I first came to Fort White, I noticed you don't have a chamber of commerce. The Main Street program that we're going to introduce you tonight would be a three-year apprenticeship that would be working with Tallahassee. There would be a Main Street director. Connie suggested that the Main Street program would be housed in your people, be a magnificent location. For three years, this, the Main Street director will be working under a Main Street organization of which has some bylaws and articles of incorporation that you can consider. This board doesn't have to worry about that. I'm just giving the two's information.
Right.
The, if you approve the resolution tonight from Main Street, Main Street will have its organization, organizational meeting next month at the Debo. That gives you an opportunity to have a chamber of commerce. If you have a chamber placed, the chamber can help you with the yard sale. The chamber can help you with a Halloween festival or a homecoming parade. All these things that I see in other communities, I don't know if you have them here.
They used to do that here.
But you will have a director that will be working under the guidance of Main Street and Tallahassee. The next slide shows you that in Florida, you can see the numbers in the private and public investment, the number of new jobs and the total volunteer hours. And the next slide, I believe, will show you that the state will work with Fort White. Fort White will become a Main Street city. Has anybody heard of Main Street? Have you heard of this program? It's, it's a program that's national and also on the state. The next slide will show you that this is all the things they will provide, technical assistance. This is not a grant, this is an apprenticeship. The next slide will show you under each year, all these things that will be done. And I know that when I came to, to Date City, Pasco County, twenty years ago, if you visited Date City then and Date City now, Date City looks like Macdora. It's, it's a transformation that happens gradually, but it's coordinated with the state and with their local merchants. And it's brought together and it changes how downtown businesses will look, how many businesses will participate in various activities. And the board would be receptive to any ideas from the community for the types of activities that would bring the community in together. Now, the next slide will show you, all of these things would be done by the director. And we would have until September to follow up with an application. The next slide will show you, uh, that those conferences require. I will be working, if you approve the program tonight, I will work with the director, whoever he or she may be. And I will work with them and go to the conferences in Tallahassee. It's not required, but there is a national conference in Washington. That'd be great for you sent us, but no feelings if you don't do it. The next slide will be, this is what they look at. The local community, the organization and readiness, the local program area, and the need for a downtown revitalization. And I think the board is receptive to the fact that somebody, some entity needs to bring you together for Fort White, not for Colonia County or anything like that, just specific for, uh, Fort White. Now, the next slide is what will be in the application that we will send off. The history of the community, cultural features. You've already got some historic properties already in the, in the county. You have historic building stock. The next slide will show that the community profile will be on community demographics, your major employers, natural resources, development trends, that kind of thing. And give this Tallahassee an idea, what is Fort White? It will look at your city government, what kind of things that have been going on with the city government. And the next slide will be the local program area, what is happening in Main Street. And Main Street is the whole town, not just the downtown, but the whole town involving the high school and your businesses. And this, all, all of these factors that are mentioned here will be in our application. And then there's one, there's a slide next. We've already come up, I say we and they, I'm, I'm going to hand this out, this is for information only. You get an advanced copy of the articles of incorporation and the bylaws. We're creating a five-by-one C three organization. We've come up with a stationary town of Fort White Main Street. We hope to have the first meeting that we're approved tonight will be on August twenty at the Debo. At that time, articles of incorporation will be adopted, the bylaw will be adopted, and the election of officers. Now, the Main Street will be, the, the business owners, they will, among themselves, will let to the vice president or the vice president. And they will act, as I said, as a chamber of commerce, bringing your community together. And I'm making the last slide, I can't remember what else it's like. Yeah. The application is due on September three and we will find out in November if we've been designated a Main Street program. So tonight, you have a resolution before you that will authorize us to begin that. And of course, you already have warnings that's already finalized in your CRA. So in our application, we will tell them, you've got an active historic property grant in Tallahassee, you've got a CRA founded, now you want a three-year apprenticeship with Main Street to bring all these things together. It, it doesn't surprise me when I look at your agenda tonight, that half of your agenda before you tonight is the future of this town. What you decide tonight will be looked at like I see in Date City, people later can see, it took twenty years, but it started and it created a town that has a different revitalization. And the main thing is without a chamber of commerce, it's very difficult to bring the community together unless people volunteer to bring things together. This place organized, you've got a director that would make reports to this council and give you updates on what's going on, raise the business leaders together and the community together. So are there any questions? I feel a lot after tonight. No?
Any questions, board?
Haven't we decided that that building isn't usable right now? Is there stuff done to it before you had any new bits?
At one point, it wasn't a lot and we couldn't, uh, there was rotten wood on the ramps and the steps to go in and out and that's been fixed. The structure itself is fine. The structure itself is fine. There's a, a couple of broken windows from the guy that broke in and was living in there. We have to get that fixed, but other than that, it's, it's fine.
We have to bring in tables and chairs and...
I think there's some tables in there. And I was putting up decorations for Christmas.
Yeah, there might be.
I think I've seen some tables.
There might be, yeah. Could very well be, but it's not going to be that many. If we have to take three or four from the community center and move them back and forth, we can.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes, sir. Thank you.
Aisle number two, request approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash oh four, participation in the Florida Main Street program. Any questions? Go ahead. I'd like to think about it some more. This is the first I've ever heard of this. These would be volunteers we're asking for, I reckon, huh? Yeah, I think that's the only thing that, I mean...
Business partners, is that what?
We have letters that Doug and us typed up that we're going to send to every business in town, asking them to attend this meeting in August, to, um, come find out about it, to learn about it, and to see how it's going to benefit them.
And I will hope, I, I will actually be here for a couple days in August and kind of beat the drum and, and see what kind of response. Because someone who responds like you is probably the first time they've heard of it and they, they will probably have questions about what it can do.
And your director and, for lack of a better word, board is from these property owners? So it's, again, volunteer versus we're going to seek and hire a director?
Right.
Now, the director has to be paid, I understand that, but I'm counting on your CRA money to bring in a young person, hopefully fresh out of college, eager to do something, to come in and work in a community like this that has not, never had a chief of commerce.
How? As like a, a full-time job?
A meat part time.
So that would be a plan or something, right? Something that just got...
Marketing, more a marketing...
I agree with, well, I mean, you're talking about paying now. I mean, where, I know you said you're expecting on the CRA funds to offset that cost, but where are we? I mean, when will we know when guaranteed the CRA funds?
In October of next year.
Yeah, exactly. So we start this right now, they're going to start being paid immediately.
We don't have to hire the director right away. What I'm seeking now is apprenticeship. Get this, get the interest of the community, let the state know we're doing the application because we're, we're actually, we're doing everything. We're creating the agency, we're trying to, and none of this has been visible before. A lot of communities have a bigger tax base or whatever and have more to work with. So yes, if, if you approve it, I'll be working for Connie full-time in August now. The application is, is a monster, but if I fill all, all of the information that they need, rental, all the income properties that are involved, it's, it's a time investment in your community. And yes, there, it's just like the grant that we won tonight for the parks. There's no guarantee that we can do this, but if we don't ask, don't do the application, we'll never know.
Right. I know it's going to probably be a stupid question, but, um, all of this extra work is covered under our fee, everything up and remaining?
For what now?
For, for, this trying to be all of his time, he's got to do all of it.
It's a, it's a, it's included in his fee. That's on this one invoice right here, that's in here, for, um, two thousand dollars.
Is that something to come up?
No, that's it. It's one time fee.
I'm able to do that because, believe it or not, Mayor, I'm supposed to be retired.
I got you, I got you.
And so I kind of like you guys, so I keep coming back. And so, I kind of like you guys, so I keep coming back to see what we can do up here in Fort White.
What we doing this in the field, we have no, we have nobody...
That's right. And the only, there's no obligation. The only obligation will be, once we know there is a designation of the apprenticeship for three years, then we have to decide how we're going to bring the director on board. But there's a timeframe for that, like within a year. This doesn't have to happen all around. And of course, we have to advertise our position in the job description, I've already given it to Colne. And it's dependent on, we have applicants, we may not get applicants. It's a small town, and maybe some, yeah, some people feel, well, we want to work for a bigger community, so we don't go, well, we can't, we can't...
Probably want somebody who knows our community and can balance a part-time...
I just know when you, I've been at this now for, when you said director, that's not coming for our community, that's coming from Tallahassee or something, right?
No, the director will be hired.
By, by the community, from the community, that's all we're talking about.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about having somebody from...
Do they have to be from the community, or they don't?
Well, hopefully, we get somebody local, but we may get candidates that'd be willing to move, that kind of thing. And maybe one of the business owners would want the job and apply. That would be a possibility.
Okay, then go me to my paying. I'm a veteran, I'm a veteran, so I'm up in this affair and become the new director.
Mayor, we're looking at a suggested salary of $24,000, okay?
It may be be like an internship to Florida or something like that.
Yeah, it's possible that somebody from a graduate study could come down here and earn credits. So it's very flexible.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, it seems like a good, I mean, if we can get the right people, I mean, that's what, I mean, anything is built off of people. So I mean, if you have the right people pushing it, I mean, it would be a great thing for the community. If you get not so right people, then it could be a bad thing. So I mean, how do you govern that? How do you, I mean, once we...
Who's in charge of...
He got him indicted now.
Who's in charge of picking the governing board? And then, do they have any oversight, or are they a sentiment organization to itself?
Hopefully, the pool of businesses that will be invited, that will assemble at the Debo, they will organize themselves using these draft documents. They will organize themselves, and they're responsible at that point on. But the city will give credits too. You're donating the facilities, you'll be paid for the executive director. So there is, there is not an oversight, but you're being informed of the subcommittee, so to speak, that is working with the town. The Main Street organization will be working in the same capacities as this town council. They have the same objectives.
Is this board over that, this Main Street? When I say over, I mean, they have the last say-so. They can't just go out here and do whatever they want to do, and the board don't have to say-so.
There will be consent, of course, Mayor, they'll be with you, because they're the new kid on the block. And so they want to make, you know, a best first impression. The main thing is...
But I'm not trying to bring up, but saying in the past that I have had to deal with a same kind of little deal, they was not here trying to make a great impression. So I have to go with this, really, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to get into a conflict where we get the wrong group of people in there again, and then here we go back right down this road here, that they're not trying to do what's right for Fort White, and then we, now we have another conflict. And that's why I'm trying to make sure that the board here has governing over this body here, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, I was kind of flipping through this, trying to read it while we were talking about it, and that's, I guess, is my question too, is who has ultimate oversight over this project? How are board members on this project, how are they appointed, are they elected, if they're elected, by whom and how? How long are they on the board? How are they replaced? And again, what, it talks about it here in the minute or so I had to flip through it, about having the ability to borrow funds or pledge funds and all this kind of stuff. So it certainly connotates them having some power to be in charge of the funds that are here. I guess, my question is the same, you know, how are they created? How are they operated? And who has oversight over them?
Well, that's one of the advantages that you all look at this tonight. We can change this, this is not in stone. The Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws can state that Fort White Main Street answers to the town council. And Fort White Main Street does not raise funds without the permission of the town council. The town council's already participated in hiring the director, providing the public facilities, the desks and chairs, and you made the investment. And you have the state of Florida watching this program for three years.
I guess, I guess my hang-up on it is if they wanted to have a parade, they can't just decide that they're going to have a parade without the council knowing that they're going to have a parade, right?
Right. And they had to, you know, the permitting would have...
So you're saying that in the bylaws, we can make the bylaws the way we want the bylaws, and basically, that this board has the ultimate decision on everything?
But that could be clearly delineated in there, okay? This is just draft documents on my part, based on my experience with the Main Street program in Dade City, Florida, that I was part of the membership 20 years ago, I'm dating myself here. But I personally saw this program and what it did for Dade City. And even though Dade City's a bigger community, I saw the input, the business leaders coming in, and the community coming together, and that's the thing I'm striving for. But we certainly can have these documents reflect your wishes, that Fort White Main Street is a subcommittee of the town council of Fort White.
As long as you, if it says that, we should be fine.
Sure. I think we could rewrite or edit the Articles of Incorporation, the bylaws, to make it more tight, all that respect.
I just want to make sure the board has got control of that organization, and if you get a bad apple in that organization, this board can remove that person and put somebody else. That goes, that goes back to our discussion about the water thing.
Right.
So, not to ring up a bad subject, but that was exactly one of our concerns.
Yes, exactly.
Do you have any small town that's doing this comparable to the side of Fort White?
No, I purposely am pushing this. I want a challenge in my life, and this is it, believe me. This is a challenge.
I think what we need to keep in mind is, before, there was the Community Business Council here locally, and I think they had some meetings and sponsored some things, and it kind of fizzled out, and there was some infighting and stuff going on.
You?
Yeah.
That was Ms. Dix and...
Oh, no.
Yeah, that was...
That was Chamber of Commerce.
What was that, and Don Hadry, and she's saying, this would provide a person that would be in charge and be responsible, that would have to answer to the town council. Those people never answer to the town council.
Well, that person could be elected by us, correct?
You would be hiring that person.
Hiring and putting them in place.
And you would be an automatic member of Fort White Main Street in the council. You're already members too. And you can join with the business leaders, and together, together, in the first organizational meeting, you will decide on yourselves who the leaders are.
As long as, as soon as you think we're okay with...
I think that he and I can get together and talk, and get like a word down, get into this and make some edits to it, and we could, yes, I think we could work. I mean, the only thing I'm saying, and I think the board will agree with me, is that as long as the board is in control of that, I think we're fine.
Yes, sir.
It ain't like we want them to, we just don't want them to step out. I don't want control of what they do.
Well, they can, we want them to push forward and do that.
That's the purpose of having the director that answers to the town council.
But you want them to be motivated to...
Well, I agree, I agree.
Most definitely, I want them to be motivated, but if they're not doing their job, and we're like, they're not doing anything, and we got business calls complaining on them, and they need to be replaced. So that's my biggest thing, is getting somebody that's not doing what they need to be doing or whatever, so, okay, I'm doing whatever.
You need a motion, there's one of your business owners.
Yep, yep, yep. I want to be back in the lobby, adding up politics, I think.
That's not about this, it's about something else. We need a motion on this, a resolution.
Yes. If y'all are okay with it, more...
I want to ask a question that might be really silly, and I'm not even sure if it pertains to this, but here it goes. I saw something about low-income housing, I'm not sure if that's the correct definition, does that fall under the Main Street thing? Or the redevelopment, where does that fit?
The CRA, that is a topic with the CRA. So you've got two things going on now. In the short time that I have worked with this community, you have agreed to move forward as a CRA. And I'm sensing that you're agreeing to go forward with Main Street. So two objectives are going to be accomplished. There's going to be some kind of community sphere achieved, and the long-term goals of low-income housing, and all the streets that I saw that are not paid, those are long-term, but you're now going to have an organization to deal with that.
I believe, I believe what Ms. Cavett's question was, we've got somebody working on, no, we have that group that we've got working on the low-income houses to provide repair and whatever.
Yeah, that was the... That would be great, that's not what I was referring to, but that would be great.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, right.
That was the senior Beijing grant for the housing rehabilitation.
That's right.
Yes, and Doug assisted us with that as well.
That's what I was thinking about, low income for repairs and whatever.
Yes, but what he's referring to is that down the road with the CRA money, it's tax money. It's tax money that the county is going to have to pay to the town of Fort White that we've been missing the boat on. And with that tax money, the CRA board can decide that they're going to have a certain area designated for low-income housing. They can decide to pay the road here in town, different things that that money can be fixed.
But it's all to spend on Fort White, stuff that we can do in Fort White, yeah. Got it, got it. All right, great, great. I just need a motion to approve...
One more question. How far, as long as we see the final tap before we go in?
Yeah, that's my question too. Do we vote on this before we...
Yeah, we can bring that back next month.
Because this has definitely got some few issues.
You're just voting to move forward with the idea of entering into...
So we need to make a motion to move forward?
Yes.
Just, well, your motion's going to be to approve resolution R 2024-04.
That's to move forward, that's to move forward.
That's mine for the application.
That's authorizing participation in the Florida Main Street program. That's all it's doing.
You're not approving these now?
That's right. That's not being approved or disapproved. If it sounds complicated, just look at it this way, I spent 24 years trying to figure out Florida. And my associate, another 24 years, so you've got 50, 60 years. It's not easy.
We're going to, I mean, you know, we go off a lot when Mr. Lancy says, as long as we can, what we said, you know, as long as we can adjust those bylaws to keep the board, you know, in control.
I make a motion to, without the resolution R 2024-04, for the participation in the Florida Main Street program.
All second.
With the corrections of whatever we need to do.
Second, Jason's second, good. All in favor of request approval of resolution R 2024-04, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate you, good sir. Work hard for it, please.
I will, thank you, sir.
All right, public hearing, second reading ordinance 2024, creating a local community redevelopment agency.
An ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, creating the local community redevelopment agency, providing for complication, providing for conflict, providing for severalability, and providing for ineffectivity.
What is this?
This is creating the community redevelopment agency. That's just the town of Fort White, creating an agency that's going to oversee the CRA area and the funding once we start this.
Yeah, who are you talking about?
This is the second reading, yes.
Okay, got you. I'm sorry, I'm getting the brain. Okay, I'm good, all right.
I need a motion to...
You'll go ahead. All right, cool. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance 2024-02.
Second.
All favor of approving second reading ordinance 2024-02, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, now we have a public hearing.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2024-05.
I think this second one is, yeah, this is the same CRA.
So you do it.
Okay, all right.
So you didn't go... This is ordinance 20, this is the first reading of ordinance 2024-05. This is the establishing a local redevelopment trust fund to finance and refinance community development within the town of Fort White community redevelopment area. This determines that the tax increments get deposited into the redevelopment trust fund, the base year for computing the start of the CRA. It also appoints the town council as trustees of the local redevelopment trust fund.
And that's the, that's that downtown melding?
That's where the map, that we should...
That we should, right? It's the downtown.
Yeah, you all are the board. And the map is the generalization, the actual parcels will be listed, so the county will know exactly which parcels, which parcels will contribute to this tax increment plan.
In this ordinance, it's in Exhibit B, it's got some of the parcels listed. These are commercial parcels that are listed here. There are residential parcels that are included as well, but these are the commercial parcels. And there are three that we're going to add in addition to the ones that are listed on here. They'll be on the list for next meeting, for the second reading.
But all we're doing right now is approving to open that council.
We're establishing the community redevelopment trust.
Trust.
Yes. So I need a motion to move into the second reading.
And since this is a public hearing...
Oh, that's right, I didn't know.
Yeah, you found out.
All right, so yeah, these three that we're, so I guess the 2024-06 we're going to do next is also more...
And I would just say, for all of the, any questions or comments related to the community agreement?
Before we make a decision, yeah, before we make a decision, I'm going to go ahead and at this time, I'm going to open up to the public, anybody who would like to speak on behalf of 2024-02, 2024-05, and 2024-06. This is a public hearing for all three ordinance.
All right. At this time, I will close public hearing, you have to come back to the board, so I just need a motion to approve. Do you have a question?
No, I wouldn't.
It's bleeding these same people over and over, so they definitely have to be motivated and on board.
That has nothing to do with the...
All these are property owners, so it definitely does.
Yeah, that's not, this is simply for the tax assessment. This has nothing to do with the Florida Main Street program.
But it's the same people in it.
Yes, remember, they're not, they're not double taxation.
I'm not talking about tax, I'm just talking about, they've got to be motivated to be involved in all this stuff, rather than a turnoff.
That's right, ma'am. The way, and I'm sure Mr. Sanders could explain this a lot better than I can, but right now, everyone on this is taxed, okay? So what, what happens if this moves forward is, as the years go by, for all these parcels that we include in this map, as the tax value of their property increases, the Fort White gets the value of that increase. So they don't have to do anything. They can close their businesses, they can expand their businesses, they're going to be taxed the same...
Tests of the excessive byproduct, disinfection byproducts that we keep failing over and over and over again. The chlorine process has been put into place. Now the problem we have...
That's there in Aliceville?
No, here.
Oh, here.
Here. Now, the problem now that we have are the tannins. The chlorine that we had going in took out the tannins and it made it nice and pretty and white, but we have the disinfection byproduct problem. Now, we got the disinfection byproducts, we hope, under control, but now the tannins are coming. And that's why you see the water starting to turn a slight yellowish. I can look at the commode here and see it. So, we got this going on. Now, the problem being is the county, as you well know, doesn't want to put a lot of money into our plant because of the water line coming down here. I get that. I get that. But until, we can't make a decision on whether or not to take it back until we know what they were charged us for a wholesale rate. Because we have to be able to do a proposed budget. It's not going to make sense for us to take it back if we're going to lose a pile of money. So, you know, because where, you know, that money, you're going to have to put money aside for repairs or different things and stuff like that. Yeah, there's some grant money out there that we can get and different things like that, but you still have to be able to support it on an annual basis. And...
Let me hire someone. And we got to hire someone.
Yes. And if there is a possibility, pardon me?
I'm just curious, ignorant speaking here, how many people would it take to buy tannins?
One.
One, okay.
And I just recently found out that Twofold Water Engineering runs the entire plant for Melrose and their sewer system as well, their water plant and their sewer system. Before, Twofold was just kind of overseeing ours and just go checking to make sure that testing was being done and the logs were being kept correctly. They weren't really running it. They were just overseeing it as the licensed engineering firm. So, I think that it'd probably be whoofus to get in touch with Twofold Water Engineering and see what that would cost for them to run the plant for us as part of our cost benefit analysis.
So, they don't have to prove their water coming out of their new Aliceville is better than ours?
This is the, I mean, it's got to be public record. They can't hide the water, so...
Well, right now, they had a well caved in, just to give you an idea. Well, their well, their main well just caved in up in Aliceville. So, so there are issues all the way around.
I haven't been in here.
Yeah, Stuart wanted to...
Yeah, Stuart wanted to talk. Come on, Stuart. I'm sorry, bud, about to pass right over you, bud.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm here as a resident of Fort White and I am the publisher of the Columbia County Observer. It is very exciting what's going on here tonight and a very exciting story now that we're into the water. And we'll let you guys know that when they were digging the wells in Aliceville, once again, somebody did get a hold of the Justice Department because it may be hard to believe that there was some hanky panky going on in Aliceville when they could finally find, how they came back to finally finding good water. Nobody really knows what's going on. I believe those reports are supposed to be published every year, the water quality reports. But they're bats, and I haven't seen a quality, what a quality report from the county in some time, in years. And I look at the agendas, so I don't know where they are. The county's mission lately, I'm just going to come out and say, you guys are dealing with a bunch of gangsters up there. I mean, really, that's what they are. I read the letters about the back home and dump truck, undated letters, which they're not alone enough putting dated letters. I just got a letter from Florida Commerce, the head of Korea Source, but no date on the letter. Some in Florida don't, some don't like dates on letters. That equipment, I was at those meetings, I personally sat there, and I heard them say that the town of Fort White was going to get the dump truck and the back home. There was no caveats, no explanations. You didn't have to get your firstborn. You didn't have to do anything like some biblical thing. I heard it, that they were going to give that equipment to the county. I'm sorry, to the town. And the letter from David Kraus, even though it has no date on it, clearly says they were giving it to the town. My question is, if that's what everybody said, how did we get to where we are now? And I go back to my remark a couple of seconds ago about the gangsters running the county. I was at the meeting when the county attorney explained how they came up with the fact that you, that the town of Fort White was not supposed to get that equipment. The explanation basically was that the county attorney, I don't believe I'm saying this, he sat down and listened to the audio in the meeting, and he determined that this is what the audio said. Of course, nobody said that, you know, we got to go to the clerk of the court, it's an independent agent, and look at the minutes because the clerk's minutes are supposed to be accurate. And what happens at meetings is not determined by the county attorney. But the county liked that because that fit right into their scheme. So, I know this, that the city of Lake City, I spoke to them, David Ron, your board on sewer plants, that somebody else you guys might want to speak with or get in touch with again. You may have somebody else. But I will say this, I've been looking at economic development for over 40 years. Those little bricks that you see on every sidewalk in every community are CRA bricks. I think the government must be in the brick business. You go to every community you see, you go to Perry, you go to High Springs, you go to Lake City, everybody's got brick sidewalks. You got to want to happen every time when somebody comes to CRA, it's brick sidewalks all over the place. But the CRA is a great idea. Give you folks the chance to take the tax money, invest it back in your community and develop a real downtown, maybe put a supermarket. I think the main important thing here is with the water, you've got to get a wholesale rate. Once you give up your utility, you give up control of your economic development. Because utilities are like your backbone. Once you lose your ability to control the whole utility system, then there's no real sense of being the county of Fort White anymore. Because you've got to go back to the county. So, I respectfully ask that you continue those things. And I read that report about the back home with all these things you got to sign, which is crazy. I don't know if that's a decision you have to make. But the one thing that stuck out, it's in my laptop over there, is that the county said in their agreement that they gave to you, well, we've given our equipment to other people and they didn't take care of it. So, you got to ask yourself, what's wrong with them? They gave you tens of thousands of dollars of equipment to somebody else and they're either not getting it back, getting it back and such a disrepair that it's garbage. And this is the way they're learning their lesson? They gave you that equipment, can I wrap that up right now? They gave you that equipment, I'm sitting here in a room with no caveats. And I would just remind you of this, is I think the podium, is that every resident in Fort White is a taxpayer going to the county and pays the full tilt of taxes. And if that equipment is instrumental in the health and welfare of the residents of Fort White, the citizens of Columbia County, and everybody that passes through Columbia County, that's what government's supposed to do, and you need to have that equipment, just need to add a period. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, so, number seven is a...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I suggest we table it to the next meeting to give us the opportunity to put together budgets, both giving it, you know, keeping it like it is and taking it back and buying water and wholesale rate.
But to do that, you're going to have to find out what the wholesale rate is.
Well, I have, what I want to do is contact some other entities that are buying water wholesale from different places and try to get some sort of money along that. There was a lady that came to our meeting from Circap, it's called. It's an organization funded by the state of Florida that helps small communities with utilities, et cetera. She came to this morning with a water management meeting as well, and she's going to assist me with finding out some of this information.
One thought before we move on. We've got an interlevel agreement with Columbia County right now. They're running the water. Y'all say the grants are over if we don't hook with the water. Why don't we just pay for the interlevel agreement until we get all this worked out? We can take the interlevel agreement back any time we want to.
It would stay in effect until we get this worked out.
Right.
It would automatically. Because in order to, in order to do away with it, they have to give us a year's notice if it comes from them. And if we do away with it, we have to give them a year's notice. So, yeah, it's in place.
Okay. So, only thing that stays in limbo is the possession of it.
But we should, if we take it over or keep it, and then when...
Right, that's a sit wherever it's sitting without title.
Correct.
We can't use it. It's sitting out there, just rotting away in the hot sun, and they even have the audacity to send us an email asking for proof of insurance.
On what?
On their, on the equipment that we can't use.
Lance, let me ask you a crazy question off the top. Because I agree with Stuart.
You gotta sign the paper before you can even use it.
Yes, yes, because we can't get a tag or anything.
No, listen, let me take what these idiots done. They sent us a letter wanting to know for us to send insurance on it. How, excuse my language, how are you going to get insurance on something like that? They ain't got them any on.
They, Mr. King, they sent us a correspondence, and I believe we forwarded to everybody...
Yeah, I got it.
That said, you cannot have ownership, formal ownership of this equipment unless you agree, you know, that we are, that you're going to be in our water association, under our control, et cetera.
That's a caveat.
That's the caveat, which is absolutely not, you know, what this thing started out.
Right.
As Mr. Stu said, it's reflected in the letter from David Kraus that was sent. And when we pointed that out, and again, a lot of these emails have gone back and forth, we pointed that out, that Mr. Kraus had, you know, even said, this is your equipment. And I believe it was the woman's response, I believe he's the one who said, well, Mr. Kraus doesn't have the authority to make that, to take that position. This is our position. But what Mr. Kraus was doing when he sent the letter was communicating the position of the county commissioner at the time, which then that position changed. So, unless they change their position again, then Ms. Connie said that that equipment's just going to sit in our yard because we can keep on doing what we're doing now, but as long as we're doing what we're doing now, we can't have the equipment.
I was in the meeting. I would have to look back at the date, the last time, not before you got the letter saying you signed this.
Yes.
They did not mention nothing about that letter in that meeting. They said we were going to go ahead and give the Fort White, the back home and the dump truck. They don't mention a note letter of us having to sign.
And that is what, that's what I'm saying.
I think I told you that and told you, I think we reached an agreement.
This is always something.
They don't mention a laugh whatsoever that they had ordered it at Fort White, they were going to give it to Fort White.
And that goes back to the mayor and I's meeting that we had in January or February.
It was either January or December.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, I thought we had it, they weren't out yet.
So, yes, this, this equipment saga is, it's just, it's a game tool, is what it is. It's back and forth. And I, again, I echo, again, you and I have agreed far too much, that everyone who's a resident of town of Fort White is a resident of Columbia County. So, your equipment that you're taxing...
They're holding from us, paying our residents for that Fort White.
Sitting in our yard because they're trying to force you down.
Brand new equipment sitting there, okay, you can do it.
Don't take 400, they don't know what they're doing.
These projects, almost over there.
Oh, I have, I have one better than that. That last week, a tree fell over on Dorch, okay? Fell over the road, okay? Buster came in here, the county people came down because it fell onto the county commissioner's property. The county came down to cut up the tree. They sent Buster over here to ask me if they could use the new backhoe sitting out here in the yard.
I'm going to tell him, I'm going to insure him on it.
Did they?
I'm not going.
Did they use it?
No, no. It's not insured.
Ain't insured.
How nice would it have been if it wasn't insured, but you were taking care of it.
It would have been really nice, wouldn't it? Anyway, speak to your gentleman.
So, anyway, the reversion agreement from, for the equipment, it was tabled from the last meeting, so you need to make a decision, yea, nay.
I don't think we can do that until we figure out what we're going to do with...
The water.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's just going to sit.
I'm going to say we want to come get it.
Okay, so that'll get tabled to August as well then, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is the commercial garbage status. At the last meeting, you'll recall that we were informed by the county that they were terminating our interlevel agreement for the garbage collection, and the town council voted to retain the commercial garbage side of it and let them collect the residential, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And after that, we were informed that it's an all or none deal. They're not going to, yeah.
Wait, 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 wait.
The county, I don't know.
I remember Waste Pro at, yeah, well...
What'd Waste Pro tell you?
Waste Pro told me that it's, listen, Columbia County is a big fish, right? They're not, they're not, we're a little fish. So, they're going to, they're going to go along with what Columbia County's putting.
They're ganks.
Yeah, so, at this point, they were like, we just can't believe that. And I, and so many words, you got to read through what he was telling, you know what I'm saying? He wanted to tell me, but he couldn't tell me. So, I was trying to read through his answers that I was asking him, and pretty much that's what I took out of it was that, and I get it, I'm in business, so I know. You go with the guy that's providing the big check. So, here's my thing, I told Ms. Connie, they are able to offer our residents right now a cheaper rate. I agree 100%. Let's go that route, and let's let them look like the horses, because they're going to raise the rates. They're going to have to. I know that for a fact, and rates are going up. So, once we can get these rates closer in line with each other, we'll take it back up and we'll go our own route. I mean, I think that's the best. Right now, we're at such a disadvantage of 315 or 317 to 168.
198.
198. But once, and once, once Waste Pro, and they're going to, their rates are going up.
Well, they're going to.
So, yeah, once their rates adjust, we'll figure out where they're at, and then once we can get ours more in line with them, then we'll just take our garbage back up. So, I mean, it's all interlevel, any time we pray.
Yeah. I agree with you. Same.
You'll lose the backhoe in the deal.
No, that deal, no. We're giving them our garbage. And this might change tomorrow, guys, once Ms. Connie calls them and tells them they have it all, they might say, oh, we don't want it all, we don't want this now. It's a, it's a battle back and forth, so it keeps us guessing, so.
Do we got to vote on this?
I think you probably should, yeah, because, because it's a change from your last vote because they said in their last, their communication to us was residential, so we said, okay, you got to make it commercial. Then they said, no, it's got to be commercial too. So, it's a, it's a change from what you voted last time, so I think you probably vote for the change for commercial. So, let this happen.
Just agree to giving the commercial garbage to, I guess, commercial garbage to Columbia County?
Correct.
And second.
Who made the motion?
Yeah, you want to make a motion? I didn't, I didn't say it, wouldn't say it, so basically give it.
I'm making a motion to give the commercial garbage to Columbia County.
Yeah.
You got a second, it's camera. All right, so all in favor of giving commercial garbage to Columbia County, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Move ahead, if we get all these things out and get the right thing, you know, about a year from now, it'll take us, it's never going to pretty much over a year.
Yeah, I mean, until, until we know that Waste Pro goes up, and the residents will know, well, it's going to happen, because we know, and I'll see it too. But you won't, they probably won't see it until every year because it's on the tax rate now.
Okay, all right.
All right, number 10, request approval resolution 2024. Talk about this, is Greenscape Agreement, we'll get our $25,000 annually from FD, or DFT.
DFT.
So, just need a, a motion to approve the resolution number 245.
Next, what's to approve the resolution number R2455.
My say.
Get all in favor of approving the resolution 245, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, number 11 is the review of Fort White Gun Club lease.
Yes, the lease, the current lease that we have, it expires, it ends August 1st, 2024. So, attached in your package is financials that were submitted by the gun club. And basically, our current rent from the gun club is $500 a month. So, I need to know, the income that they are showing for the period of April 1, 23 through March 30th to 24 is 54, 55. That's net. So, I need y'all to decide, do you want to keep the lease as it is and renew it for another year, or do you want to make any changes to it?
I'm wanting to... Are y'all okay with 500? Are you okay with 500? All right, yeah.
Come on, Bill.
What are you doing with his foot?
It's something. Broke it. Take the doll, try to get something.
All right, so, Bill, we just want to, we all agree, we leave the gun club lease the way it is.
Yeah.
No problem, no change.
Do we do it for another year?
We do it for another year, yeah. Yeah, pose the motion to approve.
At the same rate.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make a motion to approve the Fort White Gun Club lease as it is written.
My say.
Get all in favor of approving the gun club lease as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I think we already covered number 12, the date for the yard sale.
Yep, November 2nd.
November 2nd. And them young ladies back there figuring out a way to create me a board. I ain't forgot about it. All right, number 13, they don't collect, and Ms. Connie's got some information, so please stay tuned for me and her part of talking about the collective.
As you know, we approved the ordinance creating the food truck park on May the 20th, 2024. And in that ordinance, it is required that the food truck park submit a special use permit request so that the board can consider what they're asking for in terms of operation hours, et cetera. We have not received any application. They came to the last meeting and asked to be given an application for vesting rights. We got an application, Mr. Lenders emailed them an application to apply for consideration for vesting. Vesting means they were in operation before the ordinance was passed, so the ordinance shouldn't apply to them. That's basically what vesting is about. Anyway, they have not made that application either. In addition, they have opened up another food truck down there and have not obtained a business tax license through the town. They were told they needed to do it and gotten in an argument and challenged our attorney at a meeting that it wasn't required, and he proceeded to tell them that it was. They still haven't done it. Today, I find out that they only put in a grease interceptor, they did not put in a new septic system. They have put in a grease interceptor. The septic system that was for the bathrooms only, they applied to the environmental health department for a variance to allow two food trucks to be hooked up to the existing septic system, not four. They only applied and asked for two. Why? I don't know, because they made a big deal out of having four. So, now they have their variance and two food trucks can be hooked up to the existing septic system. The only reason they were given the variance is because they, DEP knows that sewer is coming, okay?
And could it have hooked four if they would apply for it?
If they, if they apply for it, it has to be approved by DEP, and the application fee is $200 to do that.
Just to apply to do the four?
Yes, to get the two additional, to get the two additional, yes. In addition, they put on Facebook that they are enclosing the storage building that they had down there that was metal, where they had some refrigerators, where they would allow people to go in there and get food, that needed food. They put on Facebook that they were creating a club and enclosing that. Well, they did not get any permit for that. They didn't do anything that's required for public to utilize that building as a club. You're supposed to have engineered plans, you're supposed to get a building permit, all this, none of that has been done. When I questioned it, I was told that the post on Facebook was a joke, and then my comment was, okay, and they're doing all the work themselves and it's not going to cost over $4,000, which is the benchmark, to get a permit. I said, okay, then we need a notarized statement that says, no member of the public or anyone else on the premises will be allowed into that building for any use, that it is private and will be kept that way. Because there's a lot of liability if that's used as a public building and it hasn't been permitted or hasn't been done with structural or with engineered plans. So, that's another. In addition, I've told them in the past, they've got to have sign permit. We have no sign permit application. They're putting out those temporary wind, wind signs, those flutter things, those are only allowed on a temporary basis for new businesses.
And this is all per our land development book, so everybody knows, it's not something we make up, this is something that's...
Believe me, I would love to spend my time doing something else other than all this, but it is what it is. I'm telling the council, and I'm asking you what you want to do about all this.
Guys, the problem I've got with this is, if you remember the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting or meeting before, they sit here and told us that they got a new septic tank and they had inspected and all screwed with a greaser. Well, we just verified, there wasn't a new septic tank put in down there. There was a greaser put in there, but then they only, only verified to get a variance to the, two trucks after they showed out about four trucks. Now, here's where me and Ms. Connie's at. If we're going to allow them to do whatever they want to do, then we're fixing to take that land development book in there and go with the trash and everybody in the stamp and do whatever they want to do. But I am sick and tired of hearing her fussing me about the collective. Because I, I have had it up to here. They will not follow directions. We've asked them, and their last time, we've asked you, how many, how many months should we give them to, to all this? And it never stops. They always find a way to skirt something. And I'm just to the point where I'm like, I'm done. We have no problem with any of our other food trucks. I don't hear about the, the other food trucks here in town, but they are a constant every day, and then they come in here, what was it they come in here and jumped on y'all about the other day, about something, about, you told me they come in here and jumped on y'all the other day about something, I forget what it was. But they're, they're at least in here every other day.
Oh, about the, about the clubhouse thing.
Oh, okay, okay. So, it's, it's constant. So, what do y'all, what do we need to do? I, I don't know what to do. But if we're going to continue to allow them to operate, then we need to just turn our head on everything else that goes on in Fort White too.
Did you give us some direction?
Sure.
I mean, I mean, back up and get a caveat. Don't know the collective people, have no personal feelings one way or the other.
Have no personal feelings one way or the other, obviously. Um, so, uh, what I know is, since I started working with you guys, this is probably, you know, it's, it's, it's probably been the number one thing I've talked about. And it, it really is, is shocking that we're still talking about it. And the reason that we're still talking about it is, what your mayor said, is that they don't follow through with anything. Um, I think you guys have taken a beating, um, from the public about the collective. I guess it's a, it's a, it's a place that people like to go and eat, and there are not a lot of places. And hey, I'm from Old Town, okay, and we're, we're, you know, I, I went, it's, it's been from a smaller town. Um, so I get it, that there's a place in, in town that is someone's place to go and eat and all that. But you guys have other, uh, commercial businesses here in town that are following, um, your, your land development codes and your licensing codes and all that kinda stuff. And the reason that we're talking about the collective all the time is because they're not, okay? So, we don't care about whatever other commercial places you guys have here in town. We're talking about it because it's, because they're not satisfied with it. Um, and I guess the best example, or most recent example I could with that is, um, when we had our, I guess it was our last meeting, um, the, the man from the collective, I'm assuming is one of the owners of the collective, got up and said, hey, we have this vesting issue. Um, we believe we're vested, um, in, in our position and wanted an application. Now, I have, I've never communicated with these folks until after the last meeting. It's the first time I've ever communicated with, with, on the, on the collective. And what we did was, is that Ms. Connie and Mr. Garrett, well, Garrett, your planner, spent a lot of time putting together, um, an actual application for vested rights, which we didn't even have, we created one for their benefit, not for their detriment, for their benefit. And say, hey, here's what all the land development codes have about vested rights. Here's an opportunity for you to fill everything out, put everything in here, and we'll have a meeting by it. So, I communicated, um, and I, I believe, I believe the man's name is Reuben. Uh, we communicated by email. I said, hey, we're creating this for you to do. And I have advised, uh, the town council because of time limitations that to get it on, uh, one meeting, and it might have been the meeting before last, ma'am, or was it, was it last?
It's last.
Okay. I even said, okay, listen, you know, if, if you can't get it by date X, because it may, you know, you may wanna have a lot of stuff you wanna gather, get it by date Y, right? Which is further out, so we could have the hearing on it. I never, I never, no response, no, hey, here it is, or whatever. Um, and so, again, we're, we're left with, um, you know, we see these things happening in front of us. But yet, when we try to do something, we're not getting the cooperation. They, they came in here several times and talking about, oh, we wanna cooperate, we wanna work with the, with the town with them. When we actually get down to doing something, they don't do anything. So, I have, I have talked to Ms. Connie and, uh, Mr. Ronnie and said, look, you know, we, we have code enforcement, um, and again, with an agreement with the county. Um, certainly, they have, uh, the authority to come in and, and do their own investigation. But we need to hear from the council. Because she and I are out here just trying to do our job about things that are put in front of us and, and not be confrontational despite what may be being said out in, out in the community. Again, I ain't no key folks. We're not being confrontational. We've bent ourselves into a pretzel to not be confrontational. So, at this point, we need direction from the council about what do you want us to, if you want us to do nothing, we'll do nothing. But if, if we're going to do something, which is certainly gonna create a controversy, I would, would imagine, because they're, you know, from, from last year.
They're very mean to me directly.
They're very defensive. The last time you, one came here, kinda halfway jumped on you about the, the occupational, he didn't need occupational, I think it was occupational.
Business tax.
Business tax, which is absolutely.
Totally, you totally an idiot, you didn't, you, you know, I don't mean.
Well, I'm a lawyer wearing shorts.
Right.
That business tax license you were asking about, is that on the truck, the new truck, or is that on the?
The blue truck.
The business, because we're talking about, we're talking about two different things over there.
The others three have it.
A lot of people don't understand.
The others three have it that are there.
And the blue one don't.
And the blue one doesn't.
Did they say they don't have to have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, it told Lindsay he didn't have to have it. Well, he said, I heard you said that that night was in a meeting. Okay, and then another time, he was here at the podium about the vesting. And guys, listen, just let y'all know, I stopped by there the night, a couple of days before our meeting here with him. And, and basically tried to calm everything down and say, listen, I think if, since you run into, because I heard there was a set tank problem. And we wrote it up on the last meeting, can we, you think we could, is there a way we can work with them? We got sewer coming, anything, there's a way we can work with them. So, I stopped by there and I, and I told Reuben himself, I said, I, I would not go in there and tell the council that you think you're vested, and if you don't agree with me, then we're gonna sue you. I said, I would go in there, basically, we had your handle, let's see if we can work this thing out. And I said, I, I think that you'll approach the thing in the right manner. And I'll be darned if he didn't get right there on that podium and, and bring up the vegetable bank. So, I said, no, boy, are you kidding me? I said, right, I told you not to bring that up. So, everything that guys, and everybody's response to this, like you said, has we got the tag by it because they think we're trying to shut them down? Well, then, I guess my thing on the board tonight, guys, is we're working Ms. Connie and Lindsay to death. Our money, our tax, a little bit of money Full White does have. We're paying these two on this one particular thing. This thing could go away. It would lighten their mood a lot. And, and, and going away means either they go away or either they get in, get in, get in, um.
Get in line.
Get them in line with, get up to where they're supposed to be, it's not that hard. But every time we give them a task, they never come through. We have a lot to talk about, they won't even respond. So, it's not us, it's nothing personal with, they, they take it as personal, like we're attacking the collective, no, we're not. But if, if it's fair for, if, if we're gonna sit here and stop aside leases, let's use the gun club for it, and make them follow guidelines, why don't they have to follow guidelines? If they don't have to follow guidelines, they should have to follow guidelines. No business in town here should we expect to follow guidelines if we're not gonna make them follow guidelines? So, that's, that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm to the point where I'm turning, y'all tell me what to do. And if we wanna continue trying to work with them, then y'all deal with them. I'm not dealing with them no more, and I'm not expecting Connie to deal with them no more. And, and Ms. Lindsay, we need to figure out a way to get them either to come into, um, what's the word, compliance? Compliance, there you go, that's the word for the full one. They got to come in compliance immediately.
Well, and they put on Facebook, now they're serving breakfast at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, they can't be open until 6:00.
None of the other food trucks can even open until 7:00.
Our food truck resolution, and then the food truck, that's what I'm saying, they do what they wanna do. They don't ask for permission. Now, would the board have a problem opening at 6:00 if they'd come in and ask for permission? Probably not, probably not. I mean, we never talked about hours.
So, what would be the steps to get them into compliance? Or I've heard this board say several times, cease and desist, so that it doesn't continue?
I believe that the first thing that the council, if the council wanted to take action would be to direct the county code enforcement to go in and, and do their job, which is inspection, uh, a, a review of the county and the town codes. And we have an agreement with the county, so they can do, they can look at our codes as well as the county's codes and, and issue code enforcement violations against them for things that they're, they're out of code for.
So, they could be contacted and serve us tomorrow to take those steps?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, if we could get code enforcement to go.
Well, that'd be the comfort of it.
That's your best contact, sure.
I learned it.
But something, guys, for something's gotta be done.
I contacted code enforcement about the club and the non-compliance note permit. They, Reuben and I both came in here screaming at me, why did I call code enforcement? Why didn't I just go talk to them?
Because you're aware of it.
And I said, because we've been instructed not to deal with you except through our attorney. So, I called code enforcement, which is the enforcement medical to use. Well, they came in here screaming at me about it.
So, we need directions, and, and, and guys, something's gotta happen. We cannot expect the rest of our businesses to be in compliance, if we're not gonna expect them to be in compliance. Real simple, I'll lead you to that.
I have taken up on.
I have too.
We call the whole food trucks in Full White, for food, there's nowhere to eat. I've taken it up on, and taken it up on, but I say, turn to code enforcement first, and let's see what they can do.
I agree with that, and I think.
Just bring them up to compliance.
I have too, I went in there and personally talked to Reuben himself.
I'm a rule follower, and you know, you have.
We're working these two to death about it, and it, it just won't cease. It continues to something like, and they won't get in the signs, the, the set tank, the food trucks, the variances, the, I mean, all the vesting, with this, to that. I mean, we got nothing turned back in. So, they're just kind of breezing through it, they ain't gonna come there and go, well, I mean, they'll come up with some excuse. But there is no excuse. I'm at home right now for my businesses, filling out annually inspection reports. I gotta commit compliance within every year, all three businesses gotta commit compliance. If I don't do it, guess what? State of Florida will be there at my door, shutting me, slapping, they don't give you no extensions. You turn it in by the time they tell you to turn it in, or you're done. So, I mean, I'm going.
And to repeat, that goes through code enforcement rather than the mayor going down there or them coming to the office and saying, we're gonna give you an egg at 6:00 rather than 7:00.
Right.
That third party code enforcement, that would, I would think, would remove the emotional part.
Well, we already sent them down there, they've been down there. Then they come in here and jump on Connie and Debbie because they sent them down there.
Well, then, I'd call someone similar to that guy.
Well, they're gonna use our LDR.
What is it?
They use our code.
Yes, our code, yes.
The county.
It's just like our, our other interlocals, we have an agreement with the county for them to act as our code enforcement officer as though they were the town.
And we paid up to do so.
What I will have to do is take that ordinance that we passed in May, and I will have to go through it and explain to code enforcement which areas of that ordinance they are not in compliance with, the reasons why. I'll have to do a big write-up, give it to code enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, for them to know.
So, let's, let's work on that to get that behind us ASAP tomorrow. Get that behind us, and then we ain't gonna, we're not gonna turn over them. And then, what, what do you say, 30 days coming compliance?
That would be good. Here's the thing, that's what I'm saying, if, if we say, because code enforcement has their own, you know, processes. Uh, I know in most municipalities and counties, they usually, it's a, it starts out with a 30-day compliance thing. Then if they don't, then there's, it, it escalates from there.
But.
I just want them to come in compliance, and we not hear from them, no.
And, and just continue doing business and no problem.
Yeah, this might really be an ignorant question. I would hate for it to just be closed down and all that money they have invested. Can it get to that point?
It could, absolutely.
They're gonna go in compliance.
Well, and, and that's the, the, the problem is that.
That's why we've tried to do all this.
And we have residents, and we have residents come in here and call us out on the carpet for not closing them down and letting them continue when they haven't been in compliance.
That's gonna be everywhere, every town has, you know.
But my, my focus, you know, you would think if they have invested that much money down there, they would wanna come in compliance, you know what I mean? You gotta, you gotta do what, I mean, I, I don't get their thought process.
Well, I could remove that and get code enforcement in there.
So, Ms. Connie, you were directed to get code enforcement, write up the policies that we got adopted and tell them to full force ahead. Yeah, 'cause I, I'm not, we don't want them calling y'all, bothering y'all, do what they gotta do.
Oh, I promise you, they'll be down here.
Well, then, then you call, see, I don't want them back there calling you. Or call the office, and you might not be able to get, you'll get one of them.
Get your cell phone number.
Yeah, seriously, call, if they come to see you, you know, eight to.
You know, unfortunately, you gotta do that.
All right, everybody do this. Oh, yes, uh, at this time, guys, uh, we have the number five, it's citizen comments, anybody have a citizen comment? All right, I'll close citizen comments, move to the German, I have to do a motion to a German.
Make a motion to a German.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.